Well, good afternoon, everyone, and appears we might be ready. Thanks for having me in. This presentation was requested by the Borough to kind of help present to the public as well as council a little bit more information about nuisance flooding in the Borough, when it happens, how to think about it, a little bit about just some of the background ways to think about the island and as you move forward, thinking about mitigating some of these issues. So I wanted to start by thinking a little bit about elevation and what it means, because when we talk about, a lot of the things you're going to talk about in the coming days and weeks as you consider some of your mitigation things is how to think about heights and elevations and what that all means. So I like to start with this and say, you know, when we're out in Colorado and we think about elevation, we say we're on a 9,000-foot peak or we're out, you know, the mile-high cities at 5,000 feet. It means above sea level, and that's great, because sea level's somewhere over there, and that's zero, so we're 5,000 feet above zero. Well, that's all great. The problem is, so we think about the sea level, we talk about that, we say that's the datum that we're referring to, and that's what our zero is. Problem is, when you get to sea level, where is it? And that's what the big challenge is. So the ocean level, it turns out, isn't fixed. You know that tides come in and out. Some tides are higher than other tides, and there's storms, and that changes things. And then we have to add a component, that sea level, which is zero, is also changing. So all these things mean zero, and it really becomes difficult. So we started with this term called mean sea level, and mean is just an average, so that's great. So we'll just take the average sea level and call that zero. Well, it turns out that that also changes over on a 19-year cycle. That's tied to these crazy moon cycles and how close and far the moon is and how tipped in everything the Earth is, so you go on about all this. And at the end of the day, when you come right down to it, you can't put your finger on sea level when you live at sea level. And so we basically need some standard that we can relate everything to, and that's what we're going to talk about a little bit today. And one of the ways we try to get that is we think about how do we measure the tide level? And for those of you that drive over the bridge every day, you might have noticed, just off to the north side of the bridge, going over the bridge along the pier is that structure right there, and that is actually the tide measuring station that Stone Harbor is extremely lucky to have, the Stone Harbor Gauge, which is very close to here, and this is measured by the U.S. Geological Survey. Great Channel is the name of our gauge, and that's the great gauge number there. That's an actual graph from one of these. And that gauge measures the water level with a sensor, kind of similar to where you have a gas tank sensor, whether it's fuller. And it goes up and down and records that elevation every 15 minutes, and that data is beamed to a satellite and then back to central receiving point where all that data is held. The reference datum for that is something called NAVD-88, and I'm going to explain that in a second. And you get a graph that looks like the one to the left there, and I just took that mid-May of this year, and you can see there's a zero line there, and you can see sometime the tide's up close to four feet, and you know, May 18th and that evening, other times it's lower than that, it's in a little bit more than a foot range. So it's quite variable on a daily, weekly basis, and that's what we talk about. So that gauge now is tied to this NAVD-88, this magical number. So here's my understanding what that means. So when we talk about NAVD-88, that means North American Vertical Datum of 1988. And that now is the reference datum that Stone Harbor uses in all your ordinances. Not too long ago, you changed that to be your reference datum, to get everybody on the same page. And what that means is that's zero. That's this base elevation that everything is set to. And it turns out that base elevation is .23 feet or 2.7 inches higher than mean sea level, so it's not the same. And then there's a bunch of other things that get thrown around out there if you're trying to look at things. So if we just go out and we look at something that's called mean higher high water, like what the heck is that? That's like early, middle, late afternoon, is mean higher high water, and that's an average of all the high-water measurements over this 19-year period. And that's roughly about where the marsh level is. So when you look out and you see the marsh level, that corresponds pretty close to mean higher high water. So off a little bit, but that just gives you an idea. And that's used a lot when they're projecting, when you're getting a report about storm surges and things. Storm surge is usually reported above that level, because it's saying, hey, this is how high it gets, but now this is going to be higher than that. So they use that for that. And then there's mean lower low water, which is navigation and dredging. When you did all your dredging work, everything was tied to this mean lower low water, and that's related to navigation, because the idea is you never want the water to be lower than the bottom of the boat channel, right? So you need to know how shallow it is. So if you jump on the website and you pull up your tide predictions on your web app, it's going to give you a number relative to mean lower low water. So it'll say something like five feet, but the water isn't really going to be five feet on a ground elevation. So there's all these weird things going on, and it turns out that that level is 2.4 feet below mean sea level and these other positions. And then there's another one floating around that's called this NGVD-29. And the reason I bring this one up is that many of the old standard maps still have this. So if you're a homeowner and you got an elevation survey 10 years ago, it's probably in NAVD-29. If you're using old, any old survey stuff, it's in this old thing. And that has to be converted, and that's 1.31 higher than today. So all these things, what we're going to do the rest of the way on this talk is we're going to bring everything back to NAVD-88. That's what you guys are working off of, and I will, I'll label it NAVD-88, but that's zero, okay? And it's just something between not quite mean sea level, not super high, not super low. That is zero, and that's what you're going to tie to flood elevations on the island. So if you go out your door and you want to know what the elevation is at the foot of the bridge at 96th Street, it's going to be relative to that, okay? Does that sort of help? Kind of cryptic, but that's part of the reason I do this, is it's kind of confusing. Okay, so when is the island impacted by floodwaters? And the answer is, you mostly well know, sometimes at full moon tides and spring moon tides, so those are higher-than-higher tides caused by lineup of the moon and gravitational pole with the sun. Storm tides, of course, Sandy, other hurricanes, nor'easters, right? We're good at getting flooding from nor'easters, so we had Jonas in 2016, which is, was a pretty big one. That was on the lower right. And then we had three of them in March of 2018. And sometimes we also get flooding from heavy rainfall events, especially if they occur at high tide. And that's just an example. On the left side is when we start to seeing what we're calling nuisance flooding waters comes, comes up into the streets in the Borough. So now I want to kind of get up higher and look down on the, on the island. And this is a topographic map. It kind of, with the color shading, tells you if I were to fly over the top and be able to sense what the elevations are on the island, I can get a sense of the way that's set up. So darker oranges and yellows are higher elevation, and as I go down towards the greens, I'm getting to lower elevation. And what this is showing you now, the ocean front has the highest island elevations, these are the dune fields. The bayfront has the lowest island elevations. The northern portion of Stone Harbor on the bayfront has the lowest elevations on the whole island. And the southern portions of Stone Harbor is highest on both the bayfront and the beach. You can see how much higher it is down along the bay. So the whole island, when you think about it that way, is kind of tipped towards the bay, and the northern part is tipped down a little bit more. So now if I'm thinking about this as a surface that water's going to flood up on as your bucket, you kind of can see where the areas that are going to be most prone to flooding at the lowest flood elevations. Now, if I take the island and I cut through it, and I stand on the end and I look down and say, what does that look like? That's this cross-sectional profile. Okay, so I just sliced it and turned it. And when you look at this now, again, everything is tied to this NAVD-88, so zero is that NAVD-88, zero. And you can see the beach front, right? If I get right to the toe of the dunes, it's about a little bit more than two feet high. And I'll go up the dunes, and they're almost 14 feet in places, 13 feet, and that's the dunes, and then they drop back. And then you can see behind the dunes is pretty high, at eight feet or so, even nine feet. And then the island slopes gradually to the bay. And in this particular picture, you can see a bulkhead that's a little bit less than six feet high, and then it drops into the bay. And at this particular one, taken at a little bit lower tide, okay? So that's what the island looks like if I shoot sideways. And this is, this is an actual profile across one of the beach fronts, and the land slopes then naturally from the ocean front to the bay. That's product of how the island was built, and then the dunes have been engineered to be pretty high to provide that resilience for wave attack from the front side. So they're a little bit engineered, but many of you have great stories about the high dunes that used to be along the front side. So they were always there, but we've modified them a little bit. Okay, so that's what the island looks like, turned on end. So here's a slide showing you some of the historic storms that have happened and how much they would have flooded the island just based on the elevations they came to, okay? I went and found this data, almost all of them, actually all of them except Sandy were in that NAVD, NGVD-29. So I had to convert them and turn them all back to get them to the same standard here and try to, try to map them. So the Atlantic Storm of 1962, I know there's some of you in this room that have great personal tales of what that looked like. It would have flooded effectively the whole island, and I believe it did. That dune line that's there, remember, wasn't really there. So it's a little bit different, but effectively, that storm came above eight feet. The hurricane in 1944 came above eight feet. Sandy came in at about 6.7, Gloria was around six. So there's been this, just an idea of how much of the island would have flooded in these historic events. And again, these are all adjusted to that correct magic zero now. So in that framework, let's think about sea level and what sea level is doing, because remember, sea level is taking zero and it's moving it. So we have to counter and think about that. So this is measured sea level rise rates. Okay, this is a gauge, it's like that tide gauge that I just showed you, except this one's in Atlantic City, and the reason we use that one is because there's a much longer record. It goes all the way back to 1910. The one at Stone Harbor is much shorter record, so we can't look at the longer-term trends with it. That's the only reason we're using that, but the trends are similar. And what you could see from this and the measured rates, it's bouncy, right? Sometimes it's higher, lower, it bounces around, but on average, there's been an increase of sea level consistently at about 1.6 inches every 10 years. You say, well, that's not very much. But since 1980, that's six inches of rise. If I go back over, over, over a millennium, I'm talking about 1.3 feet. Remember, when you're at zero, those numbers start to matter, right? If I'm at 9,000 feet, I don't care about a foot, but when I'm at zero, I care about a foot. And the other important thing to think about is the rise rate from 1993 to 2010 is more than two times the rate that it was in the prior 90 years. So we're seeing rise rates, we're seeing accelerated rise rates, and that has a lot to do with why, in fact, those of you that lived here a while don't remember the streets flooding as frequently as they used to. And that's because the whole base level is coming up, so those little storm lifts bring the water onto the streets. And here's a photo, this is obviously the Wetlands Institute taken by a drone. This is your basic sunny day, but now the marsh has routinely flooded every spring tide for several tide cycles without storms. And remember, I told you the marsh level was really that mean higher high water, which was a 19-year average high. Now we're seeing water levels like this 10, 12, 15 times a month, which is not what used to happen. And if I talk to folks, they tell me that it used to be a really big deal when the meadows flooded, and people would come out on Stone Harbor Boulevard and watch the meadows flooding, right? Now it's just kind of happened a lot. That's sea level rise, that's evidence of it. So what does that look like in town? Well, now the bayfront streets are flooded routinely every spring tide for several cycles, even without storms. Storm tides are bringing water into new areas in a deeper depths for longer duration. There's just a couple of just snapshots. Again, sunny days, higher waters coming into the streets. That's your evidence that sea level's rising, and that's the nuisance flooding that you're all trying to think comprehensively about some of the mitigation things that can be done. So I get this question a lot, well, if sea level's rising so fast, why are the backbay channels filling in? Shouldn't they be getting deeper? Good question. Well, it turns out, as sea level rises, I showed you that picture of the marsh flooding more frequently. Well, the marsh is actually exporting mud and plant debris, and that's what's filling in. So as we get more water up in there, it erodes some of that material out. And the other thing that's happening, these marsh edges are eroding, both in storms as well as in boat wakes. This is along the channel behind Sedge Island. This is boat wake, largely boat wake-driven, and you get these big blocks of marsh that are falling off and releasing a lot of mud. So we're creating a lot of erosion, both naturally and somewhat by our doing, and at the end, the overall effect of sea level rises, we're lowering the marsh platform by that erosion, and we're infilling channels by exporting the mud. So the land's getting lower, the channels are getting higher, and then you're now faced with needing to dredge to keep the material out. Okay, so what does that really mean for island nuisance flooding? And really what we need to think about is, sea level rises, that base level of the ocean rises. So zero is coming up. So the full moon and new moon tides are higher now than they used to be. Storm tides are now higher. And here's something to think about. Superstorm Sandy's peak elevations were 6.7 feet NAVD-88, okay? If Sandy had struck, Stone Harbor exactly the same way, so same setup, some timing relative to the tides, everything was the same about that storm. The peak water elevation would have been 6.1 feet, not 6.7 feet. That's the effect of sea level rise. If Sandy were to strike Stone Harbor, again, in exactly the same way, in 2050, time the same way, wind setup the same way, tide's the same way, the peak water elevation is projected to have been between 7.3 and 8.3 feet NAVD-88, okay? That's the effect of sea level rise. I'm giving you a range on the future, because there's a lot of different ranges of projections. Remember, going backwards, I could tell you exactly what it was, because we know what sea level was. Going forward, we have to think about projections, and that's where some of the discussion comes in. And I throw this picture up there, and I talk to people a lot about that. Here's a fixed pier that was constructed, and it's underwater at high tide. I can pretty certainly guarantee you that wasn't constructed to be underwater at high tide. That's sea level rise. Those of you that have floating docks and you look out on a really high tide and you see your floating dock floating higher than vertical, horizontal, that wasn't designed to be that way, okay? That's sea level rise. So it needs to be factored in as you think about bulkhead elevations and how to manage nuisance flooding, because the time change that you can work to make changes is pretty long, and there's going to be changes embedded in that. So this brings us to planning for changing sea level. And if you are looking at long-term scenarios and thinking about planning for your, for the island, there are three commonly used sea level rise scenarios. Now we're into modeling and projections, and there are three different rise rates that are typically used. One, that's a low rise rate, a middle level, and then a high-rise range rise rate. And these go into the models, and they use different assumptions about the degree to which greenhouse gas emissions will be curbed, so the amount of change that we may or may not be able to superimpose on the changes that are happening. And there's no point in debating which ones or why or any of that, but what most government agencies are doing is they're planning for 2050 and 2100 as two time slices, and they're using mid-range projections that NOAA is providing. This is the military, this is a whole bunch of folks are using NOAA rise rates, and if you look at that, that's a 1.5 to 2.5 rise by 2050, and anywhere from three to five feet by 2100. So that's saying zero in 2050 is potentially two feet higher than it is now, okay? That's 30 years out, that's not that far out. In order to meet the CRS rating requirements that you all are working with to deal with your insurance rates and your, the Borough is required to use a specific projection, that's one by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and you're required to use a sea level change calculator and plan for both 2050 and 2100, and you have to use a mid-to-high range projections. And if you use that calculator, you get somewhere between .6 and 1.6 by 2050, and anywhere between two and five feet for, so by those two ranges I'm giving you, one's the mid and one's the high, so two to five feet by 2100. So when you think about this, you can choose what you need to do, but if you want to keep your CRS ratings low to help your insurance, you need to use these two numbers as you're in your planning mode, okay? So what does all that mean? If I wanted to go back through time, this is data from Remington-Vernick, they compiled this. So they looked at the tide gauge records I showed you from Stone Harbor Channel, from Great Channel, and they went back of 15 years of record and said, how often does that level get above three? How often does it get above four? How often does it get about five, to see how often things might have flooded? And that they come up with as well, if it's three feet, if the ground level is three feet or lower, it's going to flood 67 times a year, on average, over the last 15 years. And you can see the change, at four feet, it's seven times a year, four and a half feet, two times per year. At five feet, it's only one time every 15 months. And then as I get higher than that, it's about once every five years. And if I want to see something higher than 6.8, I got to go back to historic storms. Now, remember, this is the last 15 years of tide gauge, so I'm looking backwards. Remember, I told you the rate of rise of sea level is increasing. So these are, so when you try to look at long-term averages, you got to assume that they're actually skewed to the lower end. And I just put a star on there, that in 2012 and 2013, you had two events that topped six feet. So averages are averages. Okay, and then the Borough contracted with Stockton Coastal Research Center, and they went out and surveyed all your bulkhead elevations and provided a report to the Borough of the number of bulkheads and basically the number of surveyed points and elevations and what the elevations were. And I presented on how we converted this data, it was cold out, I think, so it's been a little while that we talked about that. So this data is 12-1, it's a snapshot in time at that point in time. And what you look at, there are some 436 or so properties that have bulkheads on the bayside, and of those, 158 are less than 5.5 feet, okay? We picked that out, because that seemed to be an important time change in the frequency of flooding, right, to think about. 149 of them that are in that 5.5 to 6.2 range, but 370 of those properties, 70% of them, are less than 6.2 feet. And 6.2 feet is the current bulkhead ordinance that the Borough has. That ordinance has been in place since the mid-1980s. So it takes a long time to turn over bulkheads and have them be constructed to an elevation, given that you're sitting in quite a few years now, and you still don't have the bulk of the bulkheads in the Borough at your current ordinance level. So that's something to think about as you try to set and think about, if you're going to adjust bulkhead elevations by ordinance, what should they be? Takes a long time. So right now, if you just motor up and down Great Channel and look around, you'll see that there is quite a discrepancy and quite a range of bulkhead heights at adjacent properties. And you can just see on the top slide, the person on the left has a much higher bulkhead than the one to the right. Again, the same sort of thing, this way, it's right to left, and then here's an example, just walking around, where you got a 3.9-foot adjacent to a 6.1-foot. So you're just going to have that, that's going to be what you have based on the time it takes for somebody to, to adjust a bulkhead. So I believe tonight you're going to be discussing potential bulkhead ordinance that's asking you to consider what elevation is appropriate to protect the Borough from nuisance flooding. And I would submit that you should set an elevation that's relevant to storm flood frequency and those flood elevations. It's a, it's a risk assessment. How often are you willing to have floodwaters come in relative to costs? The second one is you need to add some additional height for sea level rise, thinking about the lifespan of bulkheads, which is 30-plus years. So you want to set a height that if somebody builds a new bulkhead tomorrow, it's not going to be obsolete in terms of protecting them or the Borough from flooding in that 30-year time. And also remember what I told you, that it takes a really long time for all these bulkheads to turn over, with 70% of them still below the current ordinance of 6.2 feet. And then I just gave you a couple of things. 4.25 is about where most, some full moon tide, some are higher than that kind of come. 5.8 roughly is your mean bulkhead height right now. 6.19, 6.2 is your current ordinance. Jonas was 6.3, Sandy was 6.7, and I believe the discussion point tonight would be to consider going to eight feet for your proposed ordinance. And then other, a couple of other things to think about. It would make a lot of sense for, you have the data now where low bulkheads are, to try to look at that and see if those low bulkheads are contributing to flooding and how to manage them. There needs to be some kind of bulkhead inspection, because there are a lot of failing and/or leaking bulkheads. These are two examples of leaking bulkheads that are, the bulkhead's high, but the water's still coming through, so there are breaches in bulkheads. That will not be picked up in a bulkhead elevation survey. Those will come through, they'll show that they're at a suitable height, but they're still not, they're still not going to be mitigating flooding. The Borough's going to need to upgrade the Borough-owned bulkheads to come to higher elevation. Some of the 11 bulkheads that were very low on that survey are actually boat ramps, so you'd need some kind of provision to address boat ramps and closing those off to protect flooding. And then the last bit is you need to maintain the tidal flow valves that are on the stormwater outfalls. Many of you have heard about that, I didn't really go into that here. Any questions? I'm happy to address questions.
Anybody in the public have any questions for Dr. Tedesco at this time? Okay, we'll move on with the meeting. Thank you. Well done. Do I have any communications?
No, Mayor.
Now we'll have public comment. Anyone wishing to address Mayor and Council may do so at this time by coming forward to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Gail Humes. My address, 8731 Sunset Drive. I'm here to talk about the deplorable condition of 88th Street from sunset to the bay. It's the only street in Stone Harbor that is not paved to the bulkhead. And that occurred, it's probably been 20, 25 years ago, when the Borough put a new bulkhead in, and they, for some reason, decided not to pave all the way to the bulkhead. And since then, the street has continually deteriorated to the point where it's crumbling. There's loose pieces of asphalt that kids, we're kind of a prime sunset viewing spot in, on the island, and there's at least 20 to 30 people every night to come down to see a sunset. And there's loose chunks of asphalt, there's kids throwing, I yell at kids all the time for throwing chunks into the bay. There's gullies along the gutters, there's a barrier that is rusting and has big holes in it. I mean, it's, it's a lawsuit waiting to happen, I think, plus it's, it's just despicable. I first contacted the Borough in about 2015, never heard back from anybody. Last year, I think the mayor did come down, and we were told that we would be a top priority for the street being paved. Nothing has happened since last year. It's full of weeds. I mean, it's, it's really disgraceful. And I sent an email on the 25th of May this year, and I sent it to the mayor, the Borough super administrator, supervisor of streets, Department of Public Works. I heard back from no one. I just want to know what is going on and when the street is going to finally get fixed, because it's really, it's disgraceful.
And I do remember the initial time that you reached out, and I did go and look at it, and it, it is bad. And I think that it was turned over to Public Works, and they did some patching at the time. And that you were told that it was going to be on the top of the list with the street program.
But the gully along my side of the street never got it filled in. I mean, it's bad, it's, it's this deep between...
Oh, the patching was only done on what, the south side, not the north side?
Yeah. It kind of annoyed me, since I was the one to complain, and my side never even got fixed. And, and the fact that I never got a response for an email I sent over a month ago, I feel like we've totally been forgotten, and I don't understand why the street even was allowed to be in that condition all these years. I mean, we're talking a long, long time.
Is there any relief that we can offer now?
I don't have the list in front of me, but I think that was added to your 2018 Utility and Row Program, which is in design.
I mean, number one, one of the things they could do is get rid of the weeds. The weeds are disgusting. And the barrier literally has rusty holes in it. I mean, somebody, all they have to do is put their hand in it and get a big cut on their hand, and you had a potential lawsuit. I mean, it, it's bad. It's really bad.
Okay.
And there's no other street in the Borough like this. I don't know why they chose initially never to repave the street that they tore up anyway. I mean, they tore up our sidewalk, too, when they did that bulkhead, never replaced our sidewalk. So we're talking, this was back when my dad owned the property, we're talking, it's like a good 20, 25 years ago, this has been like this, so...
Do you know, Grant, was that added to the 19 program?
It's on our list. Can you go down and say...
Add it tomorrow and just...
I know the condition was...
Yeah, it is bad.
You have addressed, you have talked, correct reasons, talk...
I mean, the only reason something happened last year was because there had been some construction equipment on the street that dug it up even more, and there would be literally humps in the street, but, so that was the only time we got any response at all, so I, I just would like to feel like, since I pay my taxes, I would like to feel like I've been, being heard and would like something done about this. I have to look at this ugly street every day, so...
Okay. You're on it, Grant, you'll go down. Okay, okay.
You were there 31 years ago when my, my niece was born. She almost got born in the house. She took her to the hospital.
I was looking at you and I thought I figured it out.
So thank you. She's doing well.
Anybody else wish to address Mayor and Council?
You're on the end of the meeting.
Oh, is he the reed?
He's on the end of the meeting.
Okay. All right. Anybody else wish to address Mayor and Council?
Andy Mosseri, here with my wife, Lynn, and the reason we're here is to, you know, hear what has to be said about this plastic bag ordinance that's potentially going to be implemented. I'm just curious who on council was the catalyst for this?
Well, I guess the Go Green had looked at it. The Go Green Committee had looked at it about a year or so, year and a half ago, and truth be told, I picked up the newspaper on a Tuesday morning, and it was front page news. And I looked at our agenda, and our agenda was kind of light that day, so I thought, well, we have some time to discuss. So I said, let's just get a discussion, general consensus, and see how people feel because this is, and everybody felt the same way, that it was time that Stone Harbor started to kind of embrace it and figure out how to handle it and what to do.
Well, I just want to compliment council for doing this, planting the seed. I'm sure it's going to be a bit of a rocky road to try to figure this whole thing out, but, you know, kudos to the borough of Stone Harbor for picking this ball up and running with it because it's something that's going to be very important to the future of the town, the future of the world for that matter, and I applaud you all.
Thank you, Andy. Anyone else like to address Mayor and Council?
My name is Bill Stumpfig. I live at 249 Marshallville Road in Tuckahoe. I know a lot of people here. I'm a captain, lived at the Jersey Shore all my life on Barry Island. And I'm also the vice chair of Surf Rider Foundation, South Jersey chapter. And we are so happy, I've spent five years trying to talk councils and commissions into doing something with plastic bags. And when I read the article in the newspaper, I'm so happy. There's one thing about the ordinance, if I think if I read it right, the 2.25 mil and above bags would be allowed to be used as a reusable bag. That didn't work in Austin, Texas, if you want to look into it. It created, people were just throwing them away, the heavier plastic bags. So that part, maybe you should look into, but I think it's great what you're doing. I echo what Andy said. I know he's a businessman here, and, yeah, but I'm-
And we feel like it's, it'll be evolving. We're going to be introducing the ordinance tonight, and then we do, it'll be evolving when we see things, perhaps we either learn or see are not working, or then we can address them as we move forward.
I'll do some more research and come back next meeting and see what I can share with you. Yeah, but thank you very much for taking this up. This is great. I pick up trash, I'm an Osprey banter, and today I picked up trash out of Osprey nests all up and down here, so.
And just, what's the spelling of your last name, just for the record?
How about that?
And I saw that you, the Surf Rider Foundation, has a certification program that you do for restaurants and things.
Yes.
And I had seen that, and I just was reading an article about bandanas and saw that they were certified.
Megan was there.
And I thought that needs to get out to some of these restaurants, and then they can market themselves as eco-friendly and become Surf Rider Foundation certified. So we need to kind of get that word out there.
Well, Megan from Surf Riders here, she's in charge of that program with Surf Riders. She may-
Maybe somewhere along the line, perhaps even address the chamber or just the restaurants, target the restaurants that are at the shore because it's a good marketing type tool, too. I think it'll draw people who feel the same way.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thanks.
Anyone else like to address Mayor and Council?
My name is Fred Wenz. I live on the other side of Gail, on 8801 Sunset Drive, and everything she says is correct. We've, this street is deplorable. And furthermore, there isn't an outlet on the, in the bulkhead, on the township's bulkhead, and that creates the picture that you could take to show. So I just want to support her and say that-
Okay.
-it is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Megan Netherby. I live at 546 South Route 9 in Marmora. And I also want to applaud you for introducing such progressive legislation. We all know that plastic pollution in the ocean is a global phenomenon, but the actions of every consumer and every business and every municipality are part and parcel with this larger issue. And it's legislation like this that will be the groundswell that's needed to make larger change throughout our nation and our world. I would also like to add that I am employed as a surf instructor on the island during the summer. I spend about two to four hours a day in the waves, five to six days a week, and I'm in the habit of collecting all of the trash that I see in the ocean when I'm out there. Nearly all of it is plastic, and the number one item that I remove are the single-use plastic bags. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Swicker, and I'll be a resident of 110th shortly, moved from Weber Court. My architect is actually here this evening with me. I was wondering if the item of parking was ever addressed. I know in Avalon, they do it however many bedrooms kind of constitutes how many parking spaces. So we're building on a lot that's 2,200 square feet, so it's 55 by 40. We're required by code to have two parking spots. 110th is wider, there's angled parking, and I understand the two parking spots, when you're talking a lot of only 2,200 square feet, that is a huge chunk of the property. So I'm wondering if there was ever any thought to doing parking proportionate to the size of the house, instead of just saying, everybody has to have two spots. Because that's how code reads currently, and Avalon does it proportionately.
I don't think at this time that's being considered. We are working on our master plan, and we have a master plan subcommittee, and parking is discussed, but I don't know that that particularly is being discussed now.
Okay. How would I, how would I bring that to the-
Well, you just kind of did.
Okay. All right, because it's sucking up a big chunk of my property.
On another, from another angle, rather than sweeping change in that regard, you might want to consult with an attorney that would perhaps guide you to release specific to your property. So just a suggestion, by way of a variance or otherwise.
Okay, I'm going to remind everybody of that when I come back for my variance.
So even if, just to articulate what you're talking about and have it said the way you want it said, put it in email form and send it to the borough.
Okay, great.
And then we'll have it memorialized, and like you said, or like Councilman Craftcheck said, perhaps a variance could get you some relief.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address Mayor and Council? Going once, going twice. Okay, I'll close public comment. Ordinance 1522.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1522 be taken up on second reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Will the clerk-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1522 on second reading?
Ordinance pending Chapter 520 of the Borough of Stone Harbor, removing a handicap parking space.
The public hearing on ordinance 1522 is open. The public hearing is closed.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that 1522 be passed on second reading and advanced to third and final reading.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1522 on third and final reading?
Ordinance pending Chapter 520, removing a handicap parking space.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that ordinance 1522 be passed on third and final reading, adopted, and published according to law.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Ordinance 1523.
Mayor and Council, I move that ordinance 1523 be taken up on second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1523 on second reading?
Ordinance pending Chapter 162, the revised general ordinances.
The public hearing on ordinance 1523 is open. The public hearing is closed.
Mayor and Council, I move that ordinance 1523 be passed on second reading and advanced to third and final reading.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1523 on third and final reading?
Ordinance pending Chapter 162.
Can I, I just want to say that this ordinance prohibits bike riding and skateboards on the promenade from 80th Street to 83rd Street at the beachfront. For all of you who are wondering what we're passing here, that's what it is. Mayor and Council, I move that ordinance 1523 be passed on third and final reading, adopted, and published according to law.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Ordinance 1524.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1524 be taken up on first reading. This is the plastic bag ordinance that includes straws and plastic cutlery and styrofoam and all those other good things. Are we at this time changing the date of, we're amending it to change the date to June 1st for, in the inception of the ordinance?
So for those of you who weren't in attendance for the work session, we discussed changing the date of mandatory compliance to June 1st of 2019 from January 1st, 2019, in an effort to give the business district, or the local merchants, an opportunity to really research what their options are and to be able to just have a little bit of sensitivity towards any sort of financial hardships that they could come across. And also, since it is being introduced on July 3rd, we feel they are smack in the middle of their busiest time, and in all fairness to them, they do not have the time to interact and communicate with us. So we thought, rather than get a second summer of it, it would be mandatory compliance June 1st, 2019. Did you get a second? So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1524 on first reading?
Are we going to change it? Are we going to change it now?
As amended.
Okay. Ordinance pending Chapter 466, solid waste recycling dumping by adding a new article pertaining to environmentally acceptable packaging and product.
As amended. Correct?
As amended, correct.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1524 be passed as amended on first reading, published according to law. That it be taken up on second, third, and final reading and adoption at a meeting of Mayor and Council to be held on the 7th day of August 2018.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Ordinance 1525.
Madam Mayor and Council, ordinance 1525, I think we're pulling from, we're going to take this back to the planning board for further discussion and implement some other things concerning lot grading. And this will be back, hopefully, at the next council meeting for first, for first reading.
Ordinance 1525.
So 1525 will be the bulkhead ordinance.
Mayor and Council, I offer a resolution, or I'm sorry, ordinance 1525 for adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1526 on first reading?
Ordinance of the Borough of Stone Harbor County, Cape May, New Jersey, establishing uniform regulations for construction and repair of bulkheads.
So this ordinance, can we, I, just quickly for those here, this ordinance raises the bulkhead height going forward for new bulkheads to 8 feet over the existing 6.2 feet. It provides for the review by the borough engineer to assure structural integrity going forward, and it also requires homes that are, or properties that are raised or dismantled for new construction, that that bulkhead on that property be brought up to 8 feet. Not necessarily a new bulkhead, but the existing bulkhead, if it's structurally sound and approved by the engineer, needs to meet the 8-foot requirement. I think they're the major provisions of this. So I'd make a motion that ordinance 1525 be passed on first reading, published according to law, and that it be taken up on second, third, and final reading and adoption at a meeting of Mayor and Council to be held on the 7th day of August 2018.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Ordinance 1526.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1526 be taken up on first reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1527, 1526 on first reading?
Ordinance pending Chapter 560, the revised general ordinances regulating pools on bayfront
This ordinance allows for residential swimming pools along the bayfront to be constructed within 5 feet of the actual bulkhead location. And it also allows for the deck and pool height with, between the house and bulkhead to be elevated to an elevation of 8.7 feet. 88 datum. Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1527 be passed on first reading, published according to law, and that it be taken up on second, third, and final reading and adoption at a mayor, at a meeting of Mayor and Council to be held on the 7th day of August 2018.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes, but I'm going to have questions when it comes up for second, third, and final reading.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-138.
I offer resolution 2018 S-138 for adoption.
Second.
This is a refund of sale craft permit money, $250 to Donald Freeze for permit number 15, and $500 to Patricia Lyons for permits number 26 and 36.
End discussion. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-139.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2018 S-139 for adoption.
Second.
This is a sale of a surf rake to the borough of Cape May Point for $7,000, and that is the same value if we had traded it in.
End discussion. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-140.
I offer resolution 2018 S-140 for adoption.
Second.
This is a raffle of a handmade wooden shadow box containing a complete collection of official Stone Harbor beach tags for the benefit of the Stone Harbor Museum.
Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
I need a motion approving the Brown family sandcastle.
So moved. I have a question. I see the event was paid $75 for the application, but I believe it had checked the 225 and that wasn't paid. Are we collecting that or we're not?
This resolution provides for a three-year shared municipal agreement with the Borough of Avalon for sharing the court administrator.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzik?
Yes.
I need a motion approving the Brown Family Sandcastle.
So, moved.
I have a question. I see the event was paid $75 for the application, but I believe it had checked the 225, and that wasn't paid. Are we collecting that, or we're not? Jill, do you have that answer? It's at the very bottom, Jill.
It says sample contract, handwritten on it.
No, you keep going. It's the event details, and it's down, yes, sample contract.
It says here that they paid $75.
Yes, but they didn't pay the 250.
Why do they need 250?
Well, it's on there. I'm just asking why.
Thank you. Probably use of speech. I think it's the nature of the community.
Says that the final payment is due upon the signing of the contract Friday, July 21st, 17.
Final payment due upon contract signing by Friday, July 21st, total due 250.
That's why.
So, so, once it's approved tonight, then the contract can be signed and they can Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, now we are moving on to the Reeds' request. I hope you enjoyed the meeting.
I'm Paul Massing. I'm the general contractor of the Reeds' 2. I was asking for an exception to that ordinance is starting at 9:00 in the business district because of the traffic and congestion of all the deliveries from 9:00 on in the business district. I'm trying to pour the floors in the first floor of Reeds' 2, and I wanted to break it down into smaller disruptions, which would be like eight cement trucks at a time, and I would like to start at 7:00, so I could try to be done by 10:30. I didn't think I was in a residential area where it'd be such a detriment, but I thought if it was later in the day, it'd be more of a detriment to most of the businesses in town and getting their deliveries and everything else, because deliveries by 10, 11 o'clock are very heavy for most of the day.
And how many days are you looking at?
I was, I only wanted, I didn't want to do it on a Monday. I wanted to do it like a Tuesday, Wednesday, just because the heavy deliveries on Monday, and I needed three or four days, so I wanted to do it next Tuesday and Wednesday, and the following, maybe Tuesday. If I can get, if I can do it all that Tuesday and finish, I would just do it that Tuesday. If I didn't finish that day, I would like Wednesday. I would have the police do all the traffic and everything out there. I wouldn't do it without them, so.
So, it's the 10th, and the 11th, and the 17th, and maybe the 18th, correct?
July 10th, 11th, possibly the 17th and 18th.
Yes.
7 to 10:30.
Yes.
Any discussion?
I think it's fine, only because we can get them in and out of there without disrupting the little local businesses around there.
And to be perfectly honest, I want to direct it, too, so, because I'm sensitive about coffee talk in the grill, where I want to try to leave their parking open there, so they still could have cars parked there while it was being done.
Because if you started at 9:00, you wouldn't be out of there till 1:00.
It would take twice as long.
And that's, that's-
To be honest, it would just take twice as long, Joe.
And where exactly is it being poured? Just for everyone's benefit.
It'll, there'll be a pumping machine that's put in between the theater and the Reeds'